Good evening. It's on or about 7:00 PM, Monday evening. This is a regular session of Athens City Council. First item on our agenda is to determine if we have a quorum. I see five members present. We do have a quorum. But there will be some restrictions because of we need additional members to pass emergency clauses and things. Disposition of the minutes, regular session held May 20 and June 30, 2024. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
They've been approved. Communications from members of council. Has anyone on council received any communications they'd like to share? No? Well, I received one, and I'm going to share it, from a constituent on the Second Ward. I represent concerning Mulligan Road and Old Coach and Longview. There's suddenly a plethora of speed limit signs where before there hadn't been. And they are really very much in favor of it there. So to the city, Streets Department and Engineering, thanks a lot. So. Anyone else have any communications? All right, reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director?
No.
Treasurer? I don't see the auditor. Okay. We'll move on to ordinances for a third reading.
Oh, I think there might be one over there.
Where? Oh, Mr. Mayor, temporary.
Thank you. I did receive one email about tonight's ordinance authorizing the mayor to join the Southeast Ohio Recycling Terminal Council of Governments. Ms. Lorraine McCosker is unable to attend tonight's meeting. And she is in the Third Ward, and since Member Wood is also not here, I'll just go ahead and let you know that she strongly supports that ordinance, a third reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for not seeing your hand.
That's quite all right.
That's why I wear glasses. Ordinance 45-24. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to pay the 2024 membership fee for the Outdoor Recreational Council of Appalachia, ORCA, to provide financial support from the city's transient guest tax for the Bailey's Trail system, along with other recreational activities. This was to be introduced by Councilmember Wood, who will speak this.
You said that I would.
Very good.
Section 1, the mayor is hereby authorized to pay the 2024 membership fee to the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, or ORCA, a Council of Governments, or COG, for funding the Bailey's Trail system, along with other recreational activities in the amount of $90,000 from the city's transient guest tax paid into the general fund, provided that the proceeds of such tax are sufficient, legally available, lawfully appropriated for the purpose, and that the general fund reserve balance is at 9% or higher. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law upon its passage and approval by the mayor.
Thank you. Without a motion?
Is that a motion?
Was that a motion?
Yes, I move to approve this.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Members Spielman.
Yeah, we've talked about this a lot, as you know, and a lot of people talked about it a lot. And I think it might be a good time to just ask the treasurer, where are we at? Are we anywhere near 9%?
It's really, that's really a question that would be better asked of the auditor. I mean, I can tell you right now, the answer is no. But again, I think I mentioned last week, the auditor would like to definitely have the next, the break over July to look at the numbers and see where we're at. Hopefully, you know, maybe some things will change. But I can tell you right now, the answer would be no.
Any other questions from members of council? Administration, you have anything to add?
Nope.
Audience, anyone want to speak to this? If not, we will, we've had a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, and approved. Ordinance 53-24. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to take all steps necessary to join the Southeast Ohio Recycling Terminal SORT Council of Governments, COG, and to provide the annual dues payment. Anyone care to speak to this? Introduced by all council members. No? Well, I will look into it. Let me get the document here. The actual ordinance. Whereas the Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 167, authorizes certain political subdivisions to enter into an agreement to establish a Regional Council of Governments, a COG, for the purposes of providing certain public services on a cooperative basis and, whereas Athens City Council has reviewed and considered a proposed agreement for the establishment of the Southeast Ohio Recycling Terminal SORT Council of Governments, COG Agreement, for the purpose of managing solid waste through a regional approach to sustainability, building commonality, commonalities across regional communities, and giving members direct control over solid waste management. A copy of the COG Agreement is attached heretofore as Exhibit A. And whereas Athens City Council now desires to grant the mayor of the City of Athens authority to enter into the COG Agreement as indicated below. Be ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio. Section 1, Athens City Council hereby authorizes the mayor to submit a written request for admission as a member of the Southeast Ohio Recycling Terminal SORT Council of Governments, COG, and if accepted, to execute the COG Agreement attached heretofore as Exhibit A, along with the payment of $500 per year as required. A copy of the bylaws have been attached for purposes of reference. Section 2, the ordinance shall not financially obligate the City of Athens to contribute to the COG programs or services unless and until such financial contributions is approved by a separate ordinance. The mayor may decide to withdraw from the COG at their discretion. Section 3, Athens City Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the passage of the ordinance were taken in an open meeting in the Athens City Council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicability, with applicable legal requirements. Section 4, the ordinance shall be in effect and in full force upon its passage and approval by the mayor. I'll make a motion that we adopt this ordinance.
Second.
Discussion? Administration, anything to say?
Nothing for me.
Other elected officials? Law Director? From the public, anyone have anything they'd like to offer? You can come to the podium and ask it. Could we have your name and address for the record?
My name is Chris Cooper. I am not a citizen of Athens. I do own multiple parcels within the seat of Athens. My question is, as a ratepayer, if you adopt this ordinance, you are in a sense going to be entering into some sort of partnership in the Council of Governments, along with the Solid Waste District. And I'm really just here to ask a question. If I'm paying another provider to haul the trash and recycling from the properties that I own and operate in the City of Athens, what does the additional proposed $24 per improved parcel fee get me as a ratepayer?
That's a question for the administration. I'll pass the buck to the administration.
Well, I'll just respond that the parcel fee is a county action, not a city action. So we can't address that. Anything to add, Director Stone? We have others in the audience who might be able to answer Mr. Cooper's question, if you'd like to call them forward.
Well, I want to clarify that you're getting ready to vote on something. Do you understand what you're voting to subject the citizens to?
That's not what we're voting on. We're voting to join the Council of Governments. The parcel cost is a county action that would come to all property owners within the county. But that has nothing to do with us joining a Council of Governments. That just allows us to operate and to look into other forms that we could get better pricing and work done in the future. But it doesn't have anything directly to do with solid waste.
Okay. I guess the follow-up then would be if the city voted not to join the Council of Governments, what would be the impact?
That would still go to the county. They would approve or disapprove.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. A call for a vote. All those in favor of passing the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, it's been approved.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Ordinance 54-24. An ordinance rezoning properties located at 14, 20, 24, 30, 32, 34, and 36 Elliott Street, from R3 Residential Multi-Family Zone to B1 Neighborhood Business Zone, introduced by Councilmember Swank. Oh, should have scrolled that COG ordinance was a long one here. Do you know what page this thing starts on? I'm up to 24. Ends at 63.
61, apparently.
No, the ordinance under consideration.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm kidding. Okay, as the president said, this deals with rezoning a property, which is currently our series of properties on Elliott Street. Would be on the east side of Elliott Street. That's the same side of the street as that big parking lot for Athens Molded Machine. Rezoning is from currently an R3 zone to a multi-family zone B1, which would thereby give this property and all of those properties a greater flexibility in business development. This was recommended by the Planning Commission, the rezoning thing. We've had a hearing on it and bring it before council this evening for a vote. I would move that council pass 54-24. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Discussion? Administration, would you like to add anything to this?
Nothing for me.
I do have one question.
Very well. Member Klotfelter?
Have we yet heard anything more from the property owner about what his plans are?
I have not, and I don't know if Member Wood, who asked that specifically, did or not. Hate to interrupt him on his honeymoon. Oh. Anyone from the audience care to speak to this matter? You know the drill.
Paul Miller, 110 Morris Avenue. As we come up to third reading, just wanted to continue to encourage us as a city to seek transparency in intentions before we pass this ordinance. I think it's our responsibility if we want to stay in line with the strategic comprehensive plan of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We've had a motion and a second. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of passing 54-24 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
We have, excuse me, we have a four to one, but it still passes. So the ordinance has been approved. Ordinance 55-24. An ordinance rezoning undeveloped lots on Grand Park Boulevard and Eden Place from R2 Residential One Family/Two Family Zone to R3 Residential Multi-Family Zone, introduced by Councilmember Swank. We move over to the far east side for 55-24, and we have also discussed this in great detail. I'd like to preface my comments by personally and publicly thanking Mr. Mott for his due diligence and working with his client and listening to the questions and concerns of council. Specifically, and I'm not sure if you went down there, if you picked up the phone or folks at Donwood watched it on TV, but no longer are they parking the vehicles on East State Street in the public right-of-way, which has opened that up to much clearer visibility. And with these 95-degree temperatures, plenty of space for people to walk and bicycle up and down East State Street. So, Mr. Mott, I truly do appreciate you taking care of that. Secondly, on this good faith effort and relationship, appreciate you providing the plans for the, for the owners, the owners' plans for expanding the parking lot. Unfortunately, I did not bring a copy for everybody today, but I can't hold this up. If you notice, what we have here are five lots, and they are going to only use the first three lots for parking, leaving a fairly substantial amount of green space between the parking lot and the houses. And I think that was a direct request in taking into account the concerns of the neighbors, particularly those who are right behind that on Grand Park and Eden. In fact, it appears they're taking up very, very little land greater than 50%. So that is a good move, too. And again, thank you for doing that. As we said, we didn't need schematic drawings. Little Lego drawing went perfectly well. That said, we still have one concern, and that is the concern of the lights. On the 14th of this month, the code office went out at 9 o'clock, roughly sunset, and did light meter readings of the property and the area. I met with the law director today and talked with Mr. Riggs on the phone today about this. Our code says that acceptable light, and the term we use is light trespass, is one-tenth of one foot candle. I can do inches, I can do metrics, but I'm not sure what a foot candle is. It is some form or some unit of measurement. A one-tenth of one foot candle at a certain distance, a certain place. When the measurements were taken, unfortunately, they're 20 times that. They're 2.1 foot candle. And if we could, Ryan, could we pop up some pictures, please? I'm standing in the parking lot, Brittany, that's your old neighborhood. I'm standing in the parking lot on Grand Park, looking to the northeast. The first property you see there on the right is, what, 11 or 9? On the right, 11, is 11 Grand Park. Seven Grand Park, I'm sorry. An owner-occupied home that, as you can see from the glare of the light, as I commented several weeks ago, I could play night golf and not lose a ball there. Second photograph, Ryan, please. This is looking across the street. The property on the left is six, and the property on the right is eight. Again, taken with the same camera, the same time, without artificial light on, on that particular street. It's quite bright. It's quite bright. With the light issue still in place, I am very reluctant to bring this before council for a final vote. Because just as we did with the parking on East State Street and the plans, I think it would be a good business practice of this council to give the owner of the property a reasonable amount of time to mitigate the light situation. We can't require it, no more than we could have required the other two things that they did willfully and in good faith. And because of that, it would be my suggestion this evening to table this until the first meeting that we return from break, the first Monday of May, I don't want to go backwards, first Monday of August, to bring these lights in compliance with current city code. It would be real simple to issue a citation. It would be real interesting to do this, that, and the other. I don't think that's, that's in the best interest of the city, and I don't think it's in the best interest of the business. I think we should, whenever possible, work with these businesses. And for that reason, I am going to move that we table this until the first meeting following the break.
Second.
We've had a motion to table and a second. Any discussion about tabling this ordinance? Over here, sorry. Member Spielman.
I mean, it seems like a good idea. I just wonder, from the law director, can we do that for that reason? Or can we pretty much do it for any reason? Has this been done before?
I don't know that it's been done before, but I talked with Member Swank, and I understand his position. That's all I can say at this point. He wants to table it until they comply, and it's possible that they would comply without tabling it, but we don't know that. And that's his decision as to what he wants to do as far as making that motion.
Member Klotfelter?
I think it makes sense to table it, partly because we've had at least two people speak to us about this light issue, in addition to seeing those really convincing photographs. So if it's a neighborhood concern, the amount of light, I think it gives, it makes sense to give the owner a chance to remedy that situation before we vote.
Does the administration have any comments on this?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Swank. Appreciate you doing your due diligence here and thinking of the neighborhood. Do you know if the, like, light bulbs can be changed on these existing light poles? Or there will have to be new light poles or a different kind of, you know, downward-directed light? Do you know what the solution is for getting to our?
I don't know, and I wouldn't pretend to, but I don't mean to put Director Stone on the spot here, but from your experience dealing with light poles and lighting, and these are fairly new. And these aren't from when, you know, we were kids running around the neighborhood. When we put in the city's most recent set of streetlights, they were, we were able to manipulate those because initially we got quite a few complaints that they were awfully bright. So I would defer to Director Stone on maybe some background he might be able to provide in terms of light manipulation.
Thank you, Member Swank, and to your earlier comment about foot candles. It's the amount of light that one candle creates for one foot away from the candle. That's the measure. Specifically, the ability to modify and reset functionally these lights, I don't know if they're set up for that. The city streetlights that we rent from American Electric Power, the new ones with the LED, do have that capability of a dimming function. Often the ones that the city installs, at least in recent years, has not had a dimming function. There are some things you can do with screening and, you know, downcast, you know, guards and such. I think you'd have to look at the specific lighter. The owner would have to look at the specific light and manufacture and see if there's something to be done there.
Even though there are separate issues, later in tonight's agenda, we're going to deal with this issue again when it comes to granting the use of the right-of-way. And if we grant the use of the right-of-way with same lights as these in that right-of-way, we're going to be granting the use of something by something that's already we're going to be granting the use of something by something that's already in violation of our code. So, even though there's separate issues, uh, this will come up again, and that's why I would, one of the reasons I would like for the business owner to be able to have ample amount of time, but not what I would consider an unusual delay, to see if they can get these modified, to bring them in compliance with our code.
Is this something that, if it's against current code, would have to fall into compliance now that it's known to the code office anyway?
We can issue a violation.
And that's what I'm trying to, over with, doing.
Okay.
I mean, functionally, they're independent activities, right?
Yes, sir.
The zoning change is independent of issuing a violation, which is independent of the special use of the right-of-way per... You all three, you can not grant the special use of the right-of-way permit, that's one point of leverage. You can not grant the zoning, that's another point of leverage, and we can issue a violation, that's another point of leverage, to get the change that you want. Um, so, but, but functionally, they're all independent actions.
And again, to be the, based on a business-friendly philosophy and in recognition of the efforts they've already made to work with the neighbors, uh, I would prefer to give them time to work this out and then come back, and assuming it's worked out, I'll be, I will move and encourage with great emphasis that council passed this at that first meeting in August.
Perhaps, perhaps, Mr. Mott would like to speak to it.
I do have a few comments. Uh, I'd like to first say, one thing I love about football is once you put the goalposts up, they stay where you put them. Uh, I have been in front of this council multiple times. There have been comments about what do we do about the lighting. There's been no request until now for anything to be done about the existing lights. And in fact, Mr. Swank, you just said you had code office out there after hours on the immediately preceding business day. And then I come in here tonight, and you tell me that the lights are too bright. This has not been communicated to my client. This has not been communicated to me. I have no idea how I'm supposed to prepare any kind of an appropriate response, other than send us the notice and we can take care of it. You had also asked a couple of times about what would happen with light pollution if this is rezoned. And I've mentioned that a couple of times, too. My client wants to put in a fence. Ideally, they would put that fence at the northern property line where it will block the most light reaching the, uh, reaching the neighbors. Uh, the shade tree commission will require shade trees. My client wants to ask the shade tree commission if all of those trees can be planted in that green space so they can grow up and block light. Also, recognize that the light pollution is a separate issue from the rezoning and from the right-of-way use permit. And I realize we'll come back to the right-of-way use permit later. I want to say this so I don't forget in that conversation. Granting permission to put lights there does not necessarily authorize a specific light or a specific brightness. You can grant the rezoning and grant the, uh, the right-of-way use permit for the lights and still require compliance with light pollution ordinance. I see no valid reason to delay this vote from now until August, because you have now decided at the last minute you are concerned about the lights and have not specifically asked about it before, even though I haven't mentioned it before.
One last comment, sir. I don't have my emails here in front of me, but I asked for this information from code over two weeks ago and just got it this morning.
You did not ask me. I could not have provided you the foot candles, but we could have had a discussion. I could have had something two weeks ago that we could have discussed. My client has looked at options, maybe lights can be angled, maybe shades can be installed. My impression, not understanding because I haven't had this conversation with my client, hasn't specifically come up about the existing lights in relation to the rezoning. My impression is that these lights were something that was provided by AEP. I don't know what kind of flexibility my client has. That is going to require a full conversation, and again, one that should not delay the rezoning
Member Cloughelder.
If we were to take your suggestion and go ahead and approve this tonight, um, how would your, well, if you're in a position to say so, how do you imagine that your client would respond if he received a violation?
He would say, respond, I imagine, the exact same way he responded when he received a notice of violation about the setback requirement. Contact me and say, what does this mean and what do we do with it? And then we go through it and we move forward from there. And I am actually not going to wait for the violation now that I have heard that the city has taken measurements and determined there's light pollution. We're going to get on this right-of-way. What exactly he can do with it is going to depend on who actually owns the lights, my client or AEP, and what kind of flexibility might be and whatever arrangements are in place. I am not completely certain, but I, I would not expect that we could get AEP to make a bunch of changes to lights they own. They might, they might not, but I would not anticipate that they will. And I don't know who owns the lights. I just know where they're located.
So, so, you don't know who owns the, owns the lights in the middle of Donwood's property?
I'm sorry, I thought you meant the lights along the edge. Yes, the lights in the middle can be addressed.
Therefore, I would re-up on my wanting to table this and get it addressed in the next six, six weeks. I'm not talking about the ones in the right-of-way, I'm talking about the ones in the middle of the property.
Even that is something that should have come up before now, and I, it strikes me that this is an unfair delay, because for some reason, there is a problem with moving this forward now instead of having brought this up before so it could have been addressed.
Perhaps we should hear from the neighbors who were affected by this. I think their story might be a tad different.
Uh, there was one here earlier.
There's two of them.
Oh, she's still there, can't see her.
Anything else to add?
These are separate issues. My client is willing to comply with all of the code as long as they are informed of where they might be out of compliance. A discovery from Friday night that these lights are out of compliance strikes me as an artificial reason to delay the vote.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this issue?
Hi, I'm Heather Loughlin, eight Grand Park. Alan had mentioned something a couple of weeks ago. My family has lived there since the summer of 1969. We moved there when my father's restaurant was at the end of the street, and there was a Sears. So, it's not like we just moved to a business district. Um, I'm shocked that Mr. Mott said we haven't talked about lighting. I have been emailing the planning commission, I have gone to the planning commission, I have come here two or three times. Um, this light, this picture that Alan showed about the lighting on the thing, I actually took with my iPhone, and I actually have the date of it. It was June 3rd after the meeting that I spoke of, so, um, I know my neighbor Bill at six Grand Park, the brick house here has talked about lights, the Lees. I'm also vice president of the Far East Side Neighborhood Situation, and I, situation, sorry. When I get up here, sometimes I get a little nervous. Um, association, and we've heard from several neighbors on Eden and Grand Park that are complaining about the lights and other people. So, it definitely ruins our quality of life. Um, I don't know, when you were talking about a fence, Mr. Mott, if you put a fence here, it might help the people on the right side of the street, but it's certainly not going to block Bill and I across the street.
Where?
Well, this is seven, as you're going up the right. If you put a fence here, that's great, that will help the Lees, but that's certainly not going to help us across the street. So, it's a, it's a big problem. And I like Alan's idea that we put these in place, and I do appreciate the things that you've all done to help with this, but, you know, we've, the parking lot was started knowing it was an R1. So, I'm worried if we don't get these things in place that the owner might just do whatever. So, it's kind of hard to go to sleep when there are these bright lights shining in your room. And, and I'm also curious, do you know where the employees are going to be parking? Because I've heard from a couple neighbors, because the employees are all parking up and down the street and in the field, that it's hard for them to see when they're trying to get out. I have a picture of that, too. I was told employees weren't parking there, and I have pictures that employees are parking there.
Okay, let's keep the issue here to lighting.
Okay, sorry, absolutely, my bad. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak?
Hi, my name is William Blair, and I'm at six Grand Park, and, uh, I'm directly across the street. And when Alan was saying about he could go out and play golf, well, I play golf out there, and I've never lost a ball since the lights come up. So, I thank you in that regard. It's very, it's very, uh, but I'm, I'm directly, as I said, I'm directly across, and it's, I get up in the morning, or I get up at three o'clock or four o'clock in the morning, just to, it, my whole, I, I was going to close the shades now because it's, it's really bright, really bright. So, it is a hindrance, it is, it's quality of life. But we've been talking about this a long time. I mentioned it to Alan, and we, we've been talking about it, and so have the other neighbors, two, two neighbors down, two neighbors on both sides of the street down, and they see it, and they're pretty far away. But directly across as we are, Heather and I are essentially directly across, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When did the problem begin?
With the lights?
Yes.
When they, when they put them up?
Well, when was that? I mean...
You mean, it was in the middle of the field?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, when did you start noticing it was so bright? I mean, uh, five years ago?
No.
Or two years, or? I'm trying to get a feel when, when all this started.
I'd say, I'd say in the, uh...
See, I live on the south side, we don't have this problem.
When they started this parking lot in the empty lots...
Yeah, the empty lot, that was about a year and a half ago.
It's probably two years ago.
Two years?
Yeah, it's been about two years.
Okay, we'll say two years.
When they started this parking lot expansion, or the expansion of their building in the parking lot.
Okay.
I've been commenting on it, on it since it went up, essentially. And in conjunction with that was all the other stuff that was in the, you know, all the dirt still piled up and everything like that. But mostly, we focused on Heather, who's, what the hell's going on with these lights, you know? And we were told, we were told a couple of times, essentially, that they could probably redirect them or diminish in some respects. I don't know how they're going to do that, but that's up to you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else, any other comments? We have a motion?
You have another comment, Tom?
Where?
I just have a question.
Oh.
Just since these are lights that are, have been there for a couple of years in the middle of the property, does current zoning allow for them to be there?
No.
Okay, so these are out of compliance either way? Okay.
My only, I, I just want to make a comment, is that since they appear to be out of compliance, it seems like this is really a matter for the code office to handle rather than the council to, but, I don't know, to get involved with it. Member Spillness?
Yeah, I, I think we have to really think about precedent, and if we are going to use this as a cudgel for future changes...
Excuse me.
We have to think about that. I, I'm not sure I'm opposed to that idea, but I think we need to realize that that's what we're doing, and I think that's important. So, is it the responsibility of the code office, or is it the responsibility of council to, uh, punish people when they want to make a change if they haven't done something else correctly?
Member Swank?
I'm not going to use the word punish, but I would say it's responsibility of both. Uh, I think it's high time that the message is given to those who follow the rules. It's a simple process, just as the owner of a place and time appear on Washington is doing. She's not putting up the awning first and then coming before us to ask for a use of the right-of-way after the fact. She's come to us first and asked for a use of the right-of-way and following the proper order. I don't think we can continue just allow things to pop up overnight and hear things like, perhaps, they didn't know. I know I sure as hell didn't raise my children that way. I don't think many people in here would want to do that either. I don't look at this as punishment. I simply offer this as a way for a business to come into compliance so that we can then vote to zone an area that's legal from the get-go. And I think that's a fair request. And for one, I'm not the least afraid of precedent, because somewhere along the line, somebody had to pass the 13th Amendment.
Member Spillness, and this will be the last, then we're going to vote.
Again, I'm not opposed to this as a, as a, as a precedent necessarily. Um, I think we ought to consider having this as part of perhaps the change in council rules as we go forward, that we're allowed to do this, or that businesses must be in compliance in order to be allowed to make changes. Anyway, just a comment about moving forward.
Administration.
Uh, just one question to what council thinks about, since there are two ordinances in front of the body tonight, which one is appropriate for maybe dealing with the situation of the lights? The lights, I believe, are in the right-of-way, which is the next ordinance under consideration, and, and Member Swank knows more about this than any of us. And, and this is, um, a zoning request. So, I'm just asking council to think about which of these two ordinances is most appropriate to deal with this current question of the lights.
To answer your question, sir, Scott, or Ryan, if you could put the second picture The other one, please. The light pole that you can see there is not in the right-of-way. The light pole that you can see there is in the middle of this property. So, this issue we're talking about now deals with that light pole and another one, it's approximately 75 feet to the east. The light poles we're going to be talking about later are in the city right-of-way on Grand Park and on East State Street. So, they're two different sets of lights, and therefore, I think they're two different And this, this light here, this pole here and the one to the east for the folks at seven and on Eden are the most grievous. The ones on the right-of-way, particularly the one about where we would be standing, and that one are the ones who affect the neighbors who talked with us today, because it's literally across the street with no vegetation between the poles and the lights. So, I hope that helped explain the juxtaposition of the lights and the resulting, uh, yeah, shine.
Yes, sir.
If I may, President Protan?
Very well.
Um, the engineer sitting next to me pointed out that the lights are probably on the same circuit. So, whether they are effectively the lights in the right-of-way or in the middle of the property, they are probably being operated from the same electrical function, but it's up for council to decide. Thank you.
Well, if there's no further discussion, we... Okay, one more, and then that's it. Then we're going to vote, one way or the other.
That was kind of an interesting point from Engineer and Service Safety Director Stone. What do you think the implication of that is?
Yeah, thank you, Member Cloughelder. I think, um, and I don't know for certain, but, you know, it appears as though they were all installed at the same time, so it's likely that the, the vendor who installed, you know, put them all on one circuit. So, you know, if you're going to move some or change some, you know, or adjust the power on some, some, right, do it on all.
Can I make a point? So, the lights in the field that Alan just spoke of, they're new when they started this parking lot. They're new. I guess I didn't pay attention to the one in the right-of-way that was shining on my house. So, would they be on the same circuit, and if they're, if they're new?
Sure. I thought the ones on the right-of-way went in relatively recently. I mean, we're looking at images from September of '23 on Google Street View, and these are the, the older ones that were there compared to the newer ones.
Okay, the matter before us is to table this ordinance. We've had a motion and a second. We've had extensive discussion, so I'd like to call for a vote. Those in favor... Those in favor of tabling the ordinance signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Nay. There we are.
Is that three to two?
Three to two. Yeah.
The ayes have it. The ordinance is tabled. And will remain tabled until it's brought off the table. Let's see, where are we? Fifty-six dash twenty-four, does this sound right?
Yes.
An ordinance, amending ordinance fifteen dash twenty-four. Authorizing the service safety director to close streets in the uptown area for special events during the 2024 calendar year introduced by Councilmember Phil and Miss.
Yes, fortunately, we have an easy one here. I don't think we're gonna have a big fight about it. So let's get through this quickly. Basically, every year we have to, or we have in recent times, decided that it would be better to try to get all of, or as many as possible, of the street closures discussed upfront early in the year. And so we don't have to do this every session. But we did, so we did pass a bunch, but then one came up that was new and that's the Juneteenth celebration, which is this Saturday. So we want to make sure that if they do this, we need to pass it tonight. And I'm sure they have lots of plans. So it would be really disappointing if we didn't, just saying. So that's it. Uh, that's, I, I move that we pass this ordinance and let them have their celebration on Saturday.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Discussion? Anyone? Administration? Any?
In full support.
In full support. Any burden upon the street department or anything for this?
I don't believe so.
Audience? We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor of passing the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. It's passed. Ordinance fifty-seven dash twenty-four. An ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into a 20-year lease agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services to lease eight point three three four acres located north of West State Street for proposed soccer fields introduced by Councilmember McCary, but we have a substitute.
Thank you. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, Section One, subject to the approval of the Director of the Department of Administrative Services, the service safety director is hereby authorized to enter into a 20-year lease agreement with a successive renewal of five years with the State of Ohio to lease eight point three three four acres located north of West State Street commencing May 1, 2024 and expiring on April 30, 2044. For proposed soccer fields, a copy of said agreement is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. Section two, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law upon its passage and approval by the mayor. Uh, I move we pass ordinance fifty-seven twenty-four.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Discussion about this issue? Uh, Member Swank?
Uh, just real quick, easy question. Maintenance and upkeep, if we are the, let's see, is that fall on the city?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have enough mowers?
In May and June, there are never enough mowers.
So it's good to know. Any discussion from the, from the audience about this? Very well, we've had a motion and a second. All those in favor of passing this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. It has passed. Ordinance fifty-eight dash twenty-four. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of soccer netting as part of the West State Park Soccer Fields Project Number Three Five Five introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Filling it again. Before I read it, this clarifies that this is netting that will separate the fields from the current driving range. Whereas the soccer field safety netting is being purchased through Sourcewell, a cooperative purchasing, purchasing program, and competitive bidding is not required. And whereas the administration has already made several expenditures toward the project on surveying, design, storm sewer, and drainage improvements. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Section One, the 2024 appropriation ordinance one thirty twenty-three is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums. Forty-one thousand dollars to APR Income Tax Fund two seven three, transaction code five hundred, and one hundred thousand dollars to Capital Improvements Fund five eighty two seventy, transaction code five hundred, for soccer field safety netting and increasing the total appropriations by set amounts. Section two, the service safety director is hereby authorized to expend up to three hundred forty thousand dollars as follows. Two hundred seventy-nine thousand, oh, sorry, two hundred and seven thousand nine hundred from APR Tax Fund two seventy-three, transaction code five hundred, twenty-three thousand eight hundred from APR Income Tax Fund two seventy-three, transaction code three hundred, eight thousand three hundred dollars from Recreational Fund two seventy, transaction code five hundred, and one hundred thousand dollars from Capital Improvements Fund, uh, five eighty two hundred and seventy, transaction code five hundred for project, project three fifty-five. Section three, this ordinance shall be in effect and in full force upon its passage and approval by the mayor.
Thank you.
I move we pass eight fifty-eight twenty-four.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Any discussion about this? Members Swank?
Fifty-seven twenty-four and fifty-eight twenty-four are interrelated ordinances and will be a great improvement to the city of Athens. The question is, what are we gonna do for parking so that we're not parking on the grass down there? Since we've now solved that problem at the baseball fields, what are we gonna do for parking over here?
Thank you, Members Swank. I, I think, you know, for now, uh, the plan is to do head-in parking along the Long Gravel Access Road. It's a, that goes back to the, you know, the research gardens back there. And so do head-in off of that. That's functionally what happens now. You know, I, I think in the future, you know, we can look at some other sort of improvement. But at this point, I'm just trying to get the property in the city of Athens' hands and I can't do that until I get the net up because Ohio University won't sign the lease until the net is, 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 is moving.
Right.
I could address the parking a little bit. From a league perspective, um, and a pickup community, we encourage people to park in lots and walk. Uh, after five, you can park nearby in the OU lots and that we actually have to spend a lot of time asking people not to park in the grass. So it's pretty far and few that do.
Great. I think that driving range closes at six o'clock anyway, so it's sitting empty. Okay, very good. I know that's gonna come up, but just wanted to check.
Any, any other comments? Administration? Care to speak to this?
Nope, thank you.
No? Nothing with the treasure? Okay. Audience? Soccer field, netting, three hundred thousand dollars. It's your money. Hold it. If you're gonna speak, come up to the podium.
Is this for the city, like the city rec kids, or like just anybody in the city to play soccer?
It's for an adult league that pays into the city.
Okay.
Just during Saturday mornings and then it's for residents, uh, within the city.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Good idea. Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Any further discussion? Okay, call for a vote. All those in favor of passing the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Ordinance fifty-nine dash twenty-four. An ordinance amending Section twenty-two A one of Ordinance one thirty-two dash twenty-three. The 2024 French Benefits Package for Non-Union Personnel within the city of Athens introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. And since I'm chair, I guess I should speak to it. I really hate reading from computers. Uh, let's see, Section one. I'll read it. Twenty-two A one, an ordinance one thirty-two dash twenty-three. The 2024 French Benefits Package for Non-Union Personnel is hereby amended to read as follows. And as, I'll read it all. What the heck? Got nothing better to do tonight. Employees who transfer from a bargaining unit to a non-bargaining unit classification or from one non-bargaining unit to another non-bargaining unit classification will be slotted in accordance with the following provisions. Upon promotion, lateral transfer, or demotion, the date of placement in the new classification becomes employee's new classification date. One, promotion is defined as the movement of an employee to a new classification in a higher pay grade. A full-time, three-quarter time, or permanent part-time employee, employee's new pay rate shall be greater of, one, the minimum of the new pay grade, or, two, ten percent higher than the rate from which the employee was promoted. At the request of the appointing authority, a promoted, and this is the amendment, an employee's new rate of pay may be set at a rate of, and this is part of the amendment, up to twenty-five percent through the new pay grade and shall be contingent upon the employee's qualifications, education, and experience. Struck out is not to exceed the midpoint of the new pay grade or up to ten percent higher than the rate from which the employee was promoted. However, new, an appointed by city council, approval by city council is required, and this is new, for any additional movement through the pay grade. However, and this is struck out notwithstanding, to continue, promoted employees shall be assigned to a rate higher than the maximum rate the employee's newly assigned pay grade. Section two, the ordinance shall be in full force and effect in the earliest moment permitted by law upon its passage and approval by the mayor. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt fifty-nine dash twenty-four.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Any discussion about this issue? Administration? Nothing. Okay. Treasure? Okay. Audience? Very well, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving fifty-nine dash twenty-four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Sixty dash twenty-four. An ordinance amending ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-four, correcting the transfer amount needed to make an inter-fund transfer introduced by Councilmember Reisner. So. I can find it here. This ordinance was discussed twice in first and second readings and in committee. But I will read Section two since that's where the money is. The 2024 Appropriation Ordinance one thirty dash twenty-three is further amended by decreasing ARPA funds two eighty-six, transaction code five hundred, by one hundred, this is new, sixty thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy cents, striking out one hundred and forty thousand, continued dollars, and increasing ARPA funds two eighty-six, transaction code six hundred, for transfer by the same amount and increasing and decreasing set appropriations by set amount. So I would make a motion that we adopt sixty dash twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? Administration? Treasure, okay. Audience? Call for a vote. All those in favor of approving sixty dash twenty-four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Ordinance sixty-two dash twenty-four. An ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts for the Wood Sledge Infrastructure Project Number Three Seventy at University Estates introduced by Councilmember Swank.
This is, uh, part one of two involving the Woods Edge Project. This first part, which we've discussed, simply gives the service safety director the authorization to advertise and, uh, collect bids uh, for the infrastructure part of this project. Um, where's the money gonna come from? Uh, the 2024 Appropriation Ordinance one thirty twenty-three is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums. Seven hundred thousand dollars from the street fund, six hundred seventy-five thousand from the water fund, and six hundred and twenty-five thousand from the sewer fund. Instead of the developer putting up the money and then receiving the benefits of the TIF because of changing economic situations and costs in the United States, we're going to reverse that and the city is going to do that. And then the city will get paid back as the project is built out. There is one important caveat to this, which Director Stone asked us to put in and which I agree with a hundred percent. Section four, furthermore, the service safety director shall not award a contract for said infrastructure construction until city council has adopted, has adopted an amended TIF agreement. And it's my understanding that discussions of that will start as early as tomorrow at noon at the Housing Commission meeting in this building and then between Mr. Stone and the developers and other interested and responsible parties. All this does is authorize the service safety director to advertise and collect bids, not to grant a contract, because there are lots of i's and t's that needed to be crossed on the TIF going forward. And I would turn it over to Director Stone to add anything to that that he feels appropriate.
Thank you, Members Swank. Um, so actually, um, this is timely. Today, I did receive emails from the law firm that, uh, has been working on the amendment to the, the two TIF ordinances, one forty twenty. And, um, I'd have to go back and look to confirm, um, the other one. I think it's, it's, it's one from twenty-one. Um, but regardless, um, I have that, uh, that new, a draft of that new ordinance uh, or that amendment to that previous ordinance that we had, as well as, um, the, the amended TIF agreement and then the amended amendment, amended covenants that will go on, uh, the parcels, uh, basically. So there's ultimately three documents that were prepared. Um, I had a meeting with the developer today. It was previously scheduled to discuss the, the actual construction project of the infrastructure. And we went over, um, the, uh, the amended TIF agreement, uh, today with them and, and, um, I gave that to them for them to run through their, their legal, uh, as well. My approach will be to, to give this to you, um, for you to consider with the hope of, you know, starting a first reading of an amendment on the TIF ordinance next week and then going on recess and then taking up second and third reading in August. And if there is a situation where something would have to be changed based upon, uh, discussions between the legal representation of the developer during the month of July, at second reading, I can come back to you and, and ask for you to, to make a modification on that. But, uh, I do have the documents ready to go, or at least, uh, in a form for you to look at those amended, uh, the amended, uh, TIF legislation as well as, uh, the amended agreement and the amended covenants, uh, that will go forward. And so, um, I'll get those to you, um, you know, as, as quickly as possible.
Members Phil and Miss?
Yes, as, um, uh, Member Swank mentioned, tomorrow, uh, the Affordable Housing Commission is gonna be talking about the plan, the blueprints and whatnot. And so I have them right here as a matter of fact for the Woods Edge, uh, plan. And so if you could get us those documents, our meeting is at noon. And if you have any other comments, Megan will be there, our planner. And if you wanna give her some thoughts about this before she comes, or if you wanna stop by, that would be great because we will be discussing it and your input would be very valuable. Um, and we need to talk about what kinds of things the Affordable Housing Commission, under what's under their purview and, and can provide advice about, will be able to provide for the city as you move forward quickly with this.
Any other comments from the council?
I, 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 I've no, I'll, I'll do my best. I'm in labor negotiations tomorrow. And so they may persist past, you know, and I would be hopeful that, that they wouldn't persist past noon. But, but, um, if, if I'm out of those, I'll, I'll come by. But regardless, I'll provide the, uh, the documents for the commission to consider.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to remind everybody that next week is a committee night, so to do what you're suggesting would require a special session.
I thought there was a special session already.
How to get a special session? Three members of council have to notify the clerk in writing, they request a special session.
I, I'm sorry, I, you know, there's an ordinance for second reading, amended appropriations ordinance that's up tonight, that I thought you had already planned a special session for next week in order to approve, so I may have misunderstood the council schedule.
Well, I'm not privy to everything, so, you know, maybe there's some codicil out there that's done it, I don't know.
According to the rules, if we wanted to, we could vote on that tonight by a simple majority vote.
Rule two, two, special session, does say, special sessions, council may be called by the mayor, or by the clerk of council upon written recommendation by three members of the council, or by a majority vote of the council members at a regular or special session of council.
Would that require a change to the agenda? If we did a vote tonight, would we have to change the agenda and put that on the agenda?
Well, I think that here, it's upon written recommendation of three members, they could make that to the clerk, or by a majority vote by the members of council at a regular or special session of council. It does say that it could be at a regular session, tonight's a regular session, so I guess there could be a motion.
Under other business? Okay, well, we can deal with it then.
So, Mr. President, I would move the council pass sixty-two dash twenty-four.
Do we have a second?
Oh, I don't have a second.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. You're so quiet, I, you know. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. We've had discussion. Administration have nothing more to say? Very well. Audience? Ma'am? If you give us your name and your address for the record?
Sure. Marsha Ruling, five oh two Altamont. Ellen, where is this woodside area relative to the homes that are already there?
When you pass the turn into where you live.
Yeah, if I go up the hill.
Yeah. Instead of turning into where you live, continue up the hill.
Yeah.
All the way to the very back, where the road kind of curves this way.
Okay.
And if you go a little further, there's that street to the left that has those newer homes.
Yes.
Don't turn down there.
Okay.
Continue straight on into that area over there.
Thank you.
It's basically wooded.
Right above your head.
Yeah, right above Timmy's head. Basically, yeah, wooded land back there. So there will be no, because of this development, and if you're going this direction, Marsha, there will be no additional traffic upcoming, Altamont or not, those people will continue on just like they would to the other ones.
It would be nice to have another way out of that area for all the homes that are up there, and for the people in the condos where I live. Thank you.
Okay, we've had, Members Spillness?
Sorry. Well, I just want to say that I couldn't agree with you more about wanting another entrance as we get more and more traffic up there, but I know that there's some difficulties with that, but I hope that we can continue to have that conversation without too much delay. Thank you.
I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of passing sixty-two dash twenty-four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, it's passed. That concludes all third readings. We have one ordinance for second reading, ordinance sixty-one dash twenty-four, an ordinance amending the 2024 appropriation ordinance, one thirty dash twenty-three, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. I have nothing new to add to this, so we'll pass on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance sixty-three dash twenty-four, an ordinance amending the 2024 appropriation ordinance, one thirty dash twenty-three, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. An ordinance amending the 2024 appropriation ordinance, one thirty dash twenty-three, be it ordained by the council of the City of Athens, Ohio, section one, the 2024 appropriation ordinance, one thirty dash twenty-three, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: fifty thousand dollars to DUI Court Fund, two thirty-seven point one zero six, transaction code one hundred, and five thousand dollars to DUI Court Fund, two thirty-seven point one zero six, transaction code two hundred dash three hundred, to cover fifty percent of the payroll expenses for two employees currently being paid from the general fund, and increase in the total appropriations by said amount. So that ordinance has been read for the first time. Ordinance sixty-four dash twenty-four, an ordinance granting a special right-of-way use permit at eight hundred and ten East State Street for off-street vehicle parking and light poles located in the city right-of-way introduced by Councilmember Swank.
As we discussed earlier, a couple of things here. One, we probably need to amend this, or I would suggest that we amend this, particularly the first part where it says, da-da-da-da-da, special right-of-way use permit is hereby granted at eight ten East State Street, good incorporated owner on behalf of applicant Donwood LLC, for off-street vehicle parking and light poles located in the city right-of-way on Grand Park Boulevard. On Grand Park Boulevard. Then the question becomes, in section three, under, said permit shall be subject to the following conditions, and I would defer to the law director here, do we need a number three? Because the lights already exist, it states something along the lines that assuming the lights are brought into compliance with city code. If the lights didn't exist, and the normal process was being followed, they would have to be placed in right-of-way, following city code. But since they already exist, do we need to add that as a condition?
Well, you can ratify what was already done, if they're already existing in there. You know, if you would like to add that, you could. I think that if you're going to have a special session, you'll have second reading then, next week, and then giving them an opportunity to comply. Is that right? Is that what your thought is?
No, my thought was just question. I had no plan on this whatsoever. I do have some reluctance approving something, granting something that's out of compliance.
I guess what I was saying, though, is by the time, are you saying the light pole or the actual light pollution there?
It's the light pollution.
Okay, that may be fixed by, the light trespass. That might be fixed by the next reading, where the reading that you have in August.
So let's just set that part of it aside and go back to the part about the amendment. For off-street vehicle parking and light poles located in the city right-of-way on Grand Park, this is a problem. The lights on Grand Park, the existing, I believe, three lights, and the existing two lights in the right-of-way on East State Street are not a problem in and of themselves. It is the light that is the problem. Parking in the right-of-way on East State Street is a problem. And I acknowledge the great length what Mr. Mott has been able to do to get those backed up. What I'm getting at is, I don't see any problem granting the right, use of the right-of-way for the lights on East State Street. It's the cars that are the problem. So how do we separate those two? Because it reads now, this grants use of the right-of-way for off-street parking and light poles, East State Street and Grand Park. And I don't think we want to do that for cars on East State Street. So I'm looking for guidance.
So what you're saying, though, and I think what you said earlier, that that problem was remedied, is that right? That they're not parking any longer in that right-of-way?
Yeah, they have a new manager.
So then maybe this ordinance should be amended to remove that, because you're not giving them permission to be in the right-of-way anymore, and they remedied the problem.
But the poles are still there.
The poles are, but I thought you were talking about the vehicles.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. There's two issues, there's poles and vehicles.
And the...
One moves, one doesn't.
The vehicle situation has been remedied?
Yes.
I can take a crack at it. I think what you mean, Member Swank, is that off-street parking, or on right-of-way parking should be permitted on Grand Park.
Yes, sir.
But not on East State Street.
Yes, sir.
The light poles should be permitted on both of them.
Yes, sir.
And so we would need to modify section one to be more specific. I can work with the clerk.
Take a crack at that? Okay.
So we're not proposing an amendment at the moment?
Lee's gonna take a crack at it.
I'm sure he'll crack. Shall we move on?
Yeah, that's it on that.
Okay. Ordinance sixty-five dash twenty-four, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title twenty-three zoning, chapter twenty-three point zero four, permitted uses for tobacco and cannabis establishments introduced by Councilmember Swank.
So I received a phone call this week from the press about this, and after digesting what was told to me and reading what I could read in the newspapers and all that, there seems like this, it seems like this thing is written, we need to make a lot of changes to. For example, the word church is left out of here. Secondly, the way I read this ordinance is it is brought to us, it implies, and I may be wrong, but it implies that we may have a, could have a proliferation of cannabis shops here in town, where in reality, the only people can get a cannabis license now are existing medical providers. In fact, there was an extensive article on the front page of today's Columbus Dispatch that went into this in great detail. So I'm at a loss. I think, reading this thing again and again and again, as I did today, it is contrary to everything that I've been reading in the press, that we may be years or more out, and that some of these provisions are actually a bit in conflict from what is being quoted as state legislation related to this. So does anybody else have anything about this? I know one member of the press has extensively here tonight, Mr. Stone.
My understanding so far is that they're only, the state of Ohio is only issuing licenses to current medical providers. Additionally, I have heard, although I've not seen written anywhere, that there'll be a limit of a one-mile radius between licenses. If that's the case, that will be significantly more restrictive than what we've proposed in the zoning code. The Planning Commission's recommendation for this was to establish something in our zoning code that we could live with, that was in place in such condition that the state of Ohio chooses to change the way that they're going to approach this. You know, there is still the potential for the legislature to act and change the regulations of the administrative arm of state government and do something different, and we thought it wise, as a planning commission, to put some sort of zoning regulations in place so that it was an allowed use, but it wasn't an overabundant use. And so what Planning Commission put in place functionally would allow for one establishment per block in the central business district, if you were looking at the radiuses established in this particular, this particular code or version of the zoning, and then a limit on the quantity in the various zones around the city.
So what about the church part?
The Planning Commission removed church from consideration.
I guess I'd love to hear, and maybe not tonight, but before we get this too far down the road, would she, in her office, have an opportunity to research this in a little more detail, what the law director's office says about this?
And are you saying about the fact they removed the word church, or?
Any and all inconsistencies with what state?
Okay, we don't really have state law yet.
Okay.
I think that's probably the problem. The legislature hasn't reached that level of licensing or saying how many are permitted in a certain area. So I understand what the Planning Commission was trying to do, they were trying to get ahead of it somewhat, and it's possible that we could end up amending this later on when we actually have some, something in place from the legislature.
According to what I read today, before we would pass this on a three reading vote, those state things will be in place, and these licenses will be let.
I don't know that the legislature will have acted before this body acts, but they're about to go out of session, and then they're going to come back after lame duck. And so the licensing by the Board of Cannabis Control may occur, but if the legislature is going to pass additional laws to make modifications to it, I don't know that that will have occurred by the time this zoning amendment will have been passed, if it goes under the regular order.
So what would happen if the licensing actually had the word church in it? What would we need to do?
We'd have to follow the, I mean, these are kind of two independent things. This is our zoning code that gives the City of Athens the authority to, you know, regulate, you know, the place and manner of land use ultimately. If the state is more restrictive, you know, they would, they would, they would put that restriction in place, and it would, it would not allow Athens to, I mean, Athens could give a zoning permit, but, you know, purportedly, somebody couldn't get it from the state then, a license for the business. It's important to note, this is not a licensing provision for the City of Athens, this is a zoning change to the City of Athens, so it's only allowing for use or not allowing use of a particular parcel.
Member Cloughfield?
Director Stone, that makes me wonder if perhaps we should be a little more conservative so that no businesses would get, you know, confused or unable to have the state license.
So, you know, I've been giving you my, my take on the matter. The Planning Commission acted, and the Planning Commission put forward a recommendation for zoning changes to this body. So if you would like to modify it, the council has a mechanism to do that, that you can either vote it up, or you can vote it down, or you can modify it by supermajority.
We don't have that tonight.
So on the normal three reading process, the earliest we would be voting on this would be August the fifth, which gives us six, seven weeks to see what happens. Is that right? If we have a special, yes, well, yeah, if we have, yeah, so either the fifth or the, what's that, the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Of August, so we could have as much as two months to see how this transpires and what gets put into place, and what we need to do or not do. So I'm not going to vote out tonight, or next week.
I just appreciate the Planning Commission looking ahead, planning ahead, putting forward a suggestion, and doing what we really would like to see in a lot of areas, and then also just what Director Stone said, that we can't change this, we would have to vote and ask them to change it, and then they would go through their process again, but just as a reminder.
No.
I'm sorry.
We could change this?
You can change it, you can, you can, you can change it with supermajority.
With a super, yeah, well, I guess that's what I meant, sorry. But, yeah. This just basically says you can't have five yellow houses in a certain amount of area, because we don't want something. It's not really doing anything with state licensing, or who can, it cannot have a license that's separate. It's not really doing anything with state licensing or who can, it cannot have a license that's separate.
I just want to say that we have a planning commission and they do their job. And I feel they've done their due diligence. And I don't see any reason to interfere with it at this time. So I would say leave it alone. Let's just see what happens. Any further discussion on this? Is this a first reading? Everyone has a copy, I assume, on their drive, so I really don't think we need to read the whole thing.
It won't load.
Yeah. Okay, that concludes first readings. We have a one-reading resolution. Allow me to read it. R-04-24. A resolution appointing a new member to the Board of Trustees of the Ridge's New Community Authority to replace a vacancy in the Office of the Citizen Members of the Board of Trustees, reappointing a member to the Board of Trustees of the Ridge's New Community Authority, and declaring an emergency introduced by all members of council. Can we do an emergency with five people?
Yes.
Okay. So? Anyone care to speak to this? Member Spielness, you have anything?
I'm good.
Oh, okay.
Thanks.
Should we read it so people know who's being answered?
Mr. Ritchie's present.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Ritchie is present from the New Community Authority.
Well, we're gonna, going to read it here. And then if you'd like to speak to it, then right here, would you care to read it?
Sure. Whereas on June 15th, 2023, this council adopted ordinance 0-77-23, which states that successor members of the Board of Trustees or the Board of the Ridge's New Community Authority, the Authority, are to be selected in the same manner as the initial board members until such time as this council adopts an alternative method of selection or election. And whereas on June 15th, 2023, this council adopted Resolution Number R-07-23 by emergency measure, appointing Dominic Brook and Shawna Wolfe to initial one-year terms as citizen members of the board that expire on June 14th, 2024. And whereas on October 27th, 2023, Shawna Wolfe submitted a letter of resignation and resigned her position as a citizen member of the board, creating a vacancy in the Office of the Citizen Members of the Board. And whereas, this council desires to appoint Randy Gonzalez to fill the vacancy in the Office of the Citizen Members of the Board for an initial term which expires on June 14th, 2026. And whereas, this council desires to reappoint Dominic Brook to a successive term as citizen member of the board, which expires on June 14th, 2026. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Athens. Section 1, in accordance with the method of selection prescribed in Ordinance 0-77-23 and pursuant to RC 349-04, this council hereby appoints Randy Gonzalez to fill the vacancy in the Office of the Citizen Member of the Board for an initial term which expires on June 14th, 2026. Section 2, in accordance with the method of selection prescribed in Ordinance 0-77-23 and pursuant to RC 349-04, this council hereby reappoints Dominic Brook to a successive term as a citizen member of the board, which expires on June 14th, 2026. Section 3, this council and any other officials of the city are authorized and directed to take such actions and make such arrangements that are consistent with the purpose of this resolution and necessary and proper for the appointment and reappointment of members to the board. Section 4, this council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the passage of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the council and all deliberations thereby of the council and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public and all in compliance with legal requirements, including Section 121-22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 5, this is the last one. This resolution shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the City of Athens, Ohio, in order to allow the board to meet the quorum requirements for board members contained in Revised Code Chapter 349. Wherefore, provided this resolution receives the affirmative vote of two-thirds of the members of council elected or appointed, then it shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage and approval by the mayor. What does two-thirds mean if there are five of us?
Four.
It's an odd fraction. Is that a motion to adopt the resolution?
I move to adopt this resolution.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Administration, anything to say?
Just one administrative note for the clerk. I believe Mr. Gonzalez spells his name with a Z at the end and not an S, just a typo there.
Could I ask one question?
Oh, sure.
A gentleman.
You still have the floor.
Okay. Sir, since you're a member of this, do you foresee there being any community issues about the fact that Randy Gonzalez is the husband of the president of Ohio University?
Good evening. I'm Joe Ritchie. I'm the chairman of the New Community Authority, the Ridge's New Community Authority. And I don't see any concern with that. In fact, quite the opposite. I think he's bringing skills, historic skills to the table that I think are really important at this point. It's a good combination, what we have now is a good combination with Andy Stone on the board and Chris Nysley. So people that have a deep historic understanding of the Ridge's Advisory Committee and all the connection between the university and the, and the city. Dominic Brooks is among those parties that has had a longer-term interest. The critical issues right now are really stewarding the, the transfer of the property through the Department of Administrative Services at the state and the Controlling Board. So that's like number one issue. So we think Randy, Randy's engagement at that and knowledge of the university is really important at this point. So I do see a good combination, a good mix of folks that have historic knowledge and folks that are bringing new information to the table.
Thank you.
You have anything further to add? Do you have any more information that you can share with us?
I did mention that the, the current process, the focus is on completing the survey work. The survey has been completed, but the survey that separates the buildings between those that are, continue to be owned by Ohio University and those that will be conveyed to the New Community Authority is being completed, as well as a condominium declaration because it's a mixed-use declaration that covers over 40 buildings. And that's rather complex. But we're working with the Kane Law Group that was appointed by the Attorney General to help move that through. All those components are all required for the transfer. So we're progressing on all those.
Thank you. Anyone have any further questions?
Oh, just a quick one. Thank you. I spoke with Chris Nysley, as I wrote you today. And she said there would be a public meeting in July. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, there's a scheduled meeting. I believe it's July 25th, but we'll, it'll, it'll be publicized. It's an open meeting. We'll do it at the Ridge's.
Great.
And the public's welcome to that. We've notified the 317 Board because they have an interest in it ongoing. We're helping them move through the process of supportive housing, which is their interest. And they, and their, their purpose has been marked off by the university and approved in this package along with the Conservation Eastman. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, Member Swank?
Since this, well, we get ready to vote here. Since this vote requires all five of us to vote yea, should it be a roll-call vote?
It can be. You call for one.
I just think, because there's a lot of legalese in here. I just think it might be very clean if we did and we could actually all five, assuming all five vote yes, on the record saying so, it's just, you know, maybe they did, maybe they didn't vote.
Very well. I will call for a roll-call vote. There's no more discussion. Member Spielness, how do you vote?
Aye.
Member Swank?
Aye.
Member Cloughfield?
Aye.
Member, sorry. Thomas, I'm sorry. I'm gonna give a moment here. I have to sneeze, it's killing me.
Aye.
Aye. So I hear, M. Reisner, aye. So I believe we have a, that's kosher. Yeah, that's one way to put it. Yes. So it's passed. The resolution has passed. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to the meeting in July. Next is a motion to accept the May 2024 financial reports. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Anyone have any comments? Treasurer, do you have any comments? Sure? Okay. How's the interest rates doing?
They're still good.
Good, thank you. That's what I like to hear. We have a motion and a second to accept the financial reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion to accept the April 2024 credit card transactions. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of accepting the transaction for credit cards? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. We have it. And we'll add something here. I would like to make a motion that we have an emergency, or not an emergency, but a special session next Monday. What's the date on Monday? The 24th. That would come before our, or after the committee. Which one? After. We'll do the committees first.
Yeah.
Member, temporary mayor, yes?
We had an appointment. Did you do the Community Relations Commission?
Natalie Johnson?
I thought we just did that.
No.
That was the New Community Authority. That was, that was a resolution. This is...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My mistake. I point, well, we already have a motion on the floor. Okay, so let's get that out of the way, then I'll jump back to this. How's that? And then you can chastise me later. For the motion to have it, I'm sorry?
Was there a second?
Was there a second? I thought I made a motion.
You didn't finish it.
All right. Let me erase everything.
Mr. President, I move that we hold a special session next week following our regularly scheduled committee meeting.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There, got that over with. Appointment to the Community Relations Commission. Who's got that potato?
I do.
Very well.
We have a opening, a vacancy in the Community Relations Commission. And they have looked and asked Natalie Johnson to join the commission. I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Member Spielness?
I've gotten to know Natalie over the last couple of years with all of her active work in the community and the state to push important issues. She's a very good organizer. She's very articulate and she does good work. So I definitely support Natalie.
Member Cloughfield?
I concur. I also have had the chance to get to know Natalie Johnson, and I think she would be an excellent addition.
Administration?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Audience? Okay. Call for a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Okay, I believe all that's done now. Okay. Opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda? Get in line. Hate to say it, name and address.
I put it down. Marsha Ruling, Byvo to Altamont and...
Kay Taylor, 48 New Rad Road, Athens.
Kay and I have been lap swimmers at the Aquatic Center and the City Pool for many years. The Recreation Board has known for many months that the OU Aquatic Center would be, would close June 1st and not open until sometime in September. We understand that the coaches of Ohio's women's swim team offered a generous amount of money to the city or the Arts Parks and Recreation Department, we don't know which one, so that the women could practice between 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m., they offered to bring their own guards. This offer was turned down by city decision-makers. We don't know who those decision-makers are. This has contributed to the overcrowding problems during adult lap swim from 10:00 to 12:00 a.m., Monday through Friday at the pool. We believe allowing the university women to use the pool from 6:00 to 8:00 a.m., putting a guard on the leisure pool for water walkers, and putting a guard on the diving well for deep-water walkers and shorter-lane swimmers would help to alleviate the overcrowded lap lanes Monday through Friday, 10:00 to 12:00 a.m. The printed June pool calendar that is given out where we check in shows that next week, the last week of this month, of the eight lap lanes, four of them will be closed. We assume that's because of swimming lessons. This would happen between 10:00 and 12:00. Kay and I are asking the Athens City decision-makers to review Ohio's offer and add the two guards to help with the morning-laden swim problems. Respectfully, Marsha and Kay.
I would just like to add also that a couple of things that, one, the OU Swim Team, they've shown up, they've been nothing but respectful. They've been great swimmers. They've been kind, respectful. They've, they've been nothing but great. We have nothing against the OU Swim Team. They're great swimmers, too. Everybody, you know, understands that you have to share lanes. As swimmers, everyone would optimally like to have their own lane. All swimmers would. But everyone knows you have to share lanes when it gets that crowded at any pool, whether you're at the Aquatic Center or anywhere. But we understand that. But let me tell you, I have been swimming at Athens City Pools way back when we had the Crystal Pool. I started swimming at the pools when I was five years old. And I've been swimming there ever since. And this year, for the first time, it has been the most stressful swimming ever. When you get out of your car, people start gathering there almost an hour early to get in line. And people line up, and as soon as you get out of your car, you can feel the tension and the stress because people are lining up to get in line, to get one of the eight lanes. And people are complaining. And they're fetching and complaining and stressing. And people are mad and they're, and they're, and then as soon as they open the gates, they're just practically running you down to get into jumping in one of the lanes. It's, everybody's, I mean, they're grumbling about the OU Swim Team being there. And they're grumbling because the offer wasn't accepted. And they're grumbling because there are younger kids there. They don't understand why the younger kids are being allowed to swim when it's an adult swim thing. They're grumbling because the, the kids that are learning to swim are taking some of our lanes when we have adult swim. Like, it's just, it's chaotic, it's stressful. And then we've suggested all of these alternatives. And so far, nothing has really happened. So it's, it's unfortunate and it's, it's becoming, instead of going there and you're like looking forward to getting a good workout and greeting your neighbors and, and having a good swim and getting good physical exercise and being happy and mental, good mental health, you're going there and you're like, I'm gonna do my workout!
Okay, I, I think we get the idea.
All right. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Who's next?
Jeff, can I say something, please? While we're on topic?
We usually don't do that, do we?
No, 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 hang on. This is a function of my role as liaison from this body to the Arts Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I have a question.
Okay. Okay.
Would it be, since we have no one from the administration here now, would it be appropriate for me to get the contact information from these two ladies so that I may take their concerns to follow chain of command, the director of Arts Parks and Recreation?
Well, as a former law director once told me, Jeff, you're city council, you can do whatever you want. So I would take that as, yeah, you could get all the information and pass it on to who you want.
Because I bring this up in the context of the luncheon that this body had not too long ago with the president of Ohio University, and this very topic of sharing resources and facilities, it got to be an interesting conversation. So I will get that information and make sure it gets delivered up the line.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jane? Sorry.
No, it's fine. Jane Forrest Redfern, I'm the director of the Athens Hocking-Salloway District, and I wanted to find out what the process is in order to make a presentation about our draft Athens-Hocking-Salloway's management plan. The reason that I'm coming tonight is because you all are going to be taking a recess, and that is during our public comment period on the plan, as well as public hearings. And so I wanted to make sure all of you were aware of the contents of the plan prior to going on recess, in case you individually and/or your organizations would want to comment on it.
How long is this gonna take?
Oh, I'm not prepared to do it now, I was wondering if I could do it at the committee.
You mean, do, do a presentation on committee night?
Yeah.
Well, that's usually when we do it, yeah.
Okay, all right, well, I wasn't sure, I haven't got a response, so...
You have that in color?
The plan?
Yeah.
Yes. It's very nice. And it's all local pictures, I didn't take them from, what's it called, Canva.
Do you have electronic copies of that?
I, I, I will next week, I'm making fine edits.
Right, because that would really be helpful.
Yes, okay, so I did want to come before you today, though, and let you know that the, the Policy Committee of the Salloway's Manag-, Salloway's District adopted this draft plan for public comment, and I can share the schedule with you next week, but as part of that plan, it's the adoption of, or the proposed adoption of a $24 per parcel fee for all parcels, improved parcels in Athens and Hocking County, and it's $24 per year. And I just want to read this real quick. The Salloway's District, Athens County Board of Commissioners, and the Hocking County Board of Commissioners will hold three public hearings with the intent to pass a continuing resolution to charge a $24 per year improved parcel fee on improved parcels in both counties, to provide revenue to maintain the Athens-Hocking Recycling Center to purchase and maintain, and the Sutton Road Recycling Center, and to pay to implement the Salloway's Management Plan to provide access and programs for proper Salloway's disposal, recycling, and diverting hard-to-recycle materials, four times-a-year recycling days, and the proper disposal of household hazardous waste. There will be three public hearings, the first is Tuesday, June 25th, at 6:00 PM at the Athens Community Center, Tuesday, July 2nd, at 6:00 PM at the Nelsonville Public Library in Nelsonville, and Thursday, July 11th, at 6:00 PM at the Hocking County Fairgrounds at the Youth Building in Logan. To just clarify, there have been quite a few questions about the parcel fee and what an improved parcel is, and that is, parcel definition shall be made against any, against lots or parcels that are improved or in the process of being improved with at least one permanent portable or temporary building. So council member Swank asked me, for instance, if you have four units on a particular parcel, how much are you going to be charged? And it will be $24. But if you have three parcels, and you have a barn on one that generates waste, or a trailer and a house on another, you will be charged for the two parcels. So anyway, I'd like to invite the public to come, there will be a presentation about the parcel fee and the plan, and this is not a, a big mystery, we want to make it very simple, we want the parcel fee as opposing to raising landfill and hauling of garbage rates, which would hit the City of Athens a great deal. So we want to make sure that everyone gets the right information and are informed about what services we'll be providing, and how much they'll cost, and how we'll be moving in the future. So I thank you for adopting and joining the Cog, we welcome you, and I'll wait to hear from someone on council about being able to give a short presentation about the plan if, if that's available for next week.
As far as I know, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks for having me.
Thank you, Jane.
Anyone else? Well, if there's nothing further, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned at 8:52 PM.